Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion, I think I saw Mr. Norman, did you turn your light off? So next I'll go to Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a great idea. Do you know how long we're gonna be able to, how long, since, it was April the 15th, so now that we don't have that, do you know when we have to have this done?
Ms. Dethridge, I'm gonna defer to the Law Department, because I think they have some clarification on that date, which will help us tremendously. Mr. DePur.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, April 15th is a significant day with the IRS for most people, but it's also been significant with the county, because it's been a date that's been batted around as the deadline for the budget for the Board of Education. However, there's some confusion in the use of that date. Went back today to look at both the county charter and an ordinance. There was an ordinance that was passed close in time to the county charter, 1990, and in that ordinance, it does talk about April 15. But, what I can also say is that the county charter takes precedence over that ordinance that people have referred to, and especially since the county charter and the section that I reviewed was revised as of 2004. So, that's, all that to say that the deadline for this budget to be sent to the mayor is May 1st.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
So, Madam Chair, I assume then, since we have a regularly scheduled workshop on April 30th, we could postpone our voting meeting to a called meeting before that work session, or it could take the whole work session and not have anything else, and then still meet the May 1st deadline. And I think making a better informed decision as opposed to a rushed decision would be better for all concerns, so I support Ms. Hill.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Ms. Hill, Ms. Roundtree?
I was just wondering when we're gonna make the decision. I mean, after we vote, will we talk then about when we're gonna schedule the meeting? I just wanna, I think we should try and get that on the, determine when we're gonna do that. I like Ms. Fugit's suggestion of having it take place on the 30th unless there's a, I understand Mr. Dupler said the first was the deadline, and I do know the mayor's budget proposal, I think we got the announcement, is on the 7th, so I would second.
Mr. DePur, should we let Ms. Hill restate her motion, or do an amendment to her motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. She can do either one, she can either, a number of things, either withdraw the motion and then restate the motion, or it can be substituted or amended.
Oh, Ms. Hill, what would you choose to do? Do you want to make?
I would like to amend that motion to include the voting meeting for our budget to be prior to our April 30th scheduled workshop.
And I agree to the amendment, since I've seconded her motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fugit. Okay, Ms. Dethridge, did you wish to speak to this again?
Yes, I agree with that wholeheartedly, and it would also give us an opportunity to get it out so the community can have a, have the community to have time to look at it as well, and be able to get comments back to us, so that we can have that as part of our discussion.
Okay, so seeing no other lights on, then I guess the next thing to do would be to vote on, I'm sorry, Mr. Dupler.
And I apologize, Madam Chair. I think we do need to clarify the motion, Ms. Hill, as far as, are you proposing to move several line items? And I'd be looking at 11 C through, through F, or are you just proposing on moving certain ones?
Thank you, Mr. Dupler, yes.
I think you'd have to move C through F.
I think yes.
Yes. We could do D through F, D through F.
Okay.
D through F.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. It appears I would be asking the board to, this for item C.
Ms. Hill, item C is for the budget line item transfers for fiscal year 18.
Oh, I apologize. E.
No, I, D through.
D is nutrition.
Okay, doesn't matter.
E, and F, and G.
Okay, so, okay, Mr. Oaks, Ms. Cotney has asked you to clarify if the school nutrition budget needs to be approved sooner than that.
I don't believe so. Let me, let me check. No, it doesn't need to be approved sooner than that, but I can tell you that it's a standalone budget and has no impact on the general purpose budget.
Okay. So, your substitute motion, Ms. Hill, would include items C, D, E, F, I'm sorry, D, E, and F, excuse me. Okay, yes, much confusion up here. Okay, so those items, and this is a substitute motion, we have a second on it, this will replace the, oh. Okay, Ms. Hill, they would like for you to restate it for the board and the audience.
Move to, move to, move the dates on E, F, and G for vote to a special called meeting before our regular workshop on April 30th of this year.
I agree to the restated.
Okay, I think that I see no lights, so we'll go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. So, we still need to vote on the approval of this agenda, so I need a motion and a sec.
Move approval.
Go ahead. Second as amended. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about 191. We had had a lot of discussion at the last policy review, and given all the emphasis on other things, I was wondering if the board, is it, is it, and why is forced to move this back a month? Should we go ahead, given it's first, it's on first reading, but I still think that there's quite, there's some work to be done. And I don't think we can, I certainly don't think we can hash that out in this meeting, but if that's too much of a delay, given, you know, schedules, the school year, et cetera, I'll, you know, I'll remove it, but I'm just asking the board for advice on 191.
We probably need a motion and a second.
So, that's, all that to say that the, that the deadline for this budget to be sent to the mayor, is May 1st.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
So, Madam Chair, I assume then, since we have a regularly scheduled workshop on April 30th, we could postpone our voting meeting to a called meeting before that work session, or it could take the whole work session and not have anything else, and then still meet the May 1st deadline. And I, and I think, making a better informed decision as opposed to a rushed decision would be better for all concerned, so I support Ms. Hill.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Ms. Hill, Ms. Roundtree?
I was just wondering when we're gonna make the decision. I mean, after we vote, will we talk then about when we're gonna schedule the meeting? I just wanna, I think we should try and get that on the, determine when we're gonna do that. I like Ms. Fugit's suggestion of having it take place on the 30th, unless there's a, I understand Mr. Dupler said the first was the deadline, and I do know the mayor's budget proposal, I think we got the announcement, is on the 7th, so I would second.
Mr. Dupler, should we let Ms. Hill restate her emotion, or do an amendment to her motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. She can do either one, she can either, a number of things, either withdraw the motion and then, and then, and then restate the motion, or it can be substituted or amended.
Oh, Ms. Hill, what would you choose to do? Do you want to make?
I would like to amend that motion to include the voting meeting for our budget to be prior to our April 30th scheduled workshop.
And I agree to the amendment, since I seconded her motion.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Okay, Ms. Dethridge, did you wish to speak to this again?
Yes, I agree with that wholeheartedly, and it would also give us an opportunity to get it out, so the community can have a, have, the community to have time to look at it as well, and be able to get comments back to us, so that we can have that as part of our discussion.[327.02][327.02](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so seeing no other lights on, then I guess the next thing to do would be to vote on, I'm sorry, Mr. Dupler?
And I apologize, Madam Chair. I think we do need to clarify the motion, Ms. Hill, as far as, are you, are you proposing to move several line items? And I'd be looking at 11C through, through F, or are you just proposing on, on moving certain, certain ones?
Thank you, Mr. Dupler, yes.
I think you'd have to move C through F. I think yes. Yes. We could do D through F, D through F.
Okay.
D through F. D E and F.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. It appears, I would be asking the board to, this for item C.
Ms. Hill, item C is for the budget line item transfers for fiscal year 18?
Oh, I apologize. E?
No, I, D, D through?
D is, is nutrition.
Okay, doesn't matter, so.
E, and F, and G.
Okay, so, okay, Ms., Mr. Oaks, Ms. Cotney has asked you to clarify if the school nutrition budget needs to be approved sooner than that.
It, I don't believe so. Let me, let me check. No, it doesn't need to be approved sooner than that, but I can tell you that it's a standalone budget, and has no impact on the general purpose budget.
Okay. So, your substitute motion, Ms. Hill, would include items C, D, E, F, I'm sorry, D, E, and F, excuse me. Okay, yes, much confusion up here. Okay, so those items, and this is a substitute motion, we have a second on it, this will replace the, oh, okay, Ms. Hill, they would like for you to restate it for the board and the audience.
Move to, move to, move the dates on E, F, and G, for vote, to a special called meeting before our regular workshop on April 30th of this year.
I agree to the restated.
Okay, I think that I see no lights, so we'll go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye. So, we still need to vote on the approval of this agenda, so I need a motion and a sec-
Move approval.
Go ahead. Second as amended. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about 191. We had had a lot of discussion at the last policy review, and given all the emphasis on other things, I was wondering if the board, is it, is it, and why is forced to move this back a month? Should we go ahead, given it's first, it's on first reading, but I still think that there's quite, there's, there's some work to be done. And I don't think we can, I don't, I certainly don't think we can hash that out in this meeting, but if that's too much of a delay, given, you know, schedules, the school year, et cetera, I'll, you know, I'll remove it, but I'm just asking the board for advice on 191.
We probably need a motion and a second before discussing. Is that correct?
All right, I'll make the motion to delay this 30 days.
Okay. Is there a second? Ms. Owen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dethridge?
Yeah, well, I guess my question is, is it, I mean, we've worked on this awhile, is it something that need to be added to what we're at? Are we talking about the addendum versus the procedure part? I mean, I guess I'm not sure what we're talking, delaying it for.
Thank you, Ms. Dethridge. Frankly, I haven't had the molecules to even think about it. So, we did have a long discussion, it was on procedure, as well as just how it was presented in, in terms of policy, so just all of that, really. So, that's, that's my problem, yeah.
So, we have a motion and a second, and this is to the changes to the agenda. So, we will take a vote on the changes to the agenda, all in fa, is that correct? Now, we've gotta go back to the, what?
Well, I made the, I made the motion to approve, and
I seconded it.
And then Tony-
Tony wanted to amend it, and Jennifer agreed with his amendment. This is like an essay question.
Yes, so, so I need to, I need to accept the-
Yes.
Okay, I accept Tony's amendment, or postponement.
And I concur.
Okay. Now we vote.
Now we vote, okay. So, we've cleared all that up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion, oh, motion carries. Okay, so.
Now we're cleared, move on?
No, I need to, I need to make the announcement.
Yes.
If I may, Madam Chair, I know that we have several people signed up for public forum, and I, I very much, I don't know if this requires any formality to have them still speak.
Ms., our Roundtree was going to address that, Ms. Hill, I'm sorry, so Ms. Roundtree?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Because that item was postponed in our public forum, they would be shifted to public forum at the end of our meeting.
Okay. So, is that the clarification you needed?
If you have signed up, I think almost everyone on the list has signed up to speak to the budget, so if you would still like to speak at the end, is when we typically conduct public forum, unless you're speaking to an agenda item, and then if it gets postponed, you speak at the very end, so we'll still call you up if you're on the list, and we still welcome your feedback, and would love to hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we move on to the other agenda items, I want to recognize Councilwoman Lauren Ryder that came in, Ms. Roundtree, saw her come in, and I don't want to overlook her. And then also, just want to take privileges chair, and recognize my friend Lydia McCoy from the Knoxville News Sentinel, who has joined us tonight, and we're glad you're here, Lydia, and we miss you. So, she is with the University of, formerly with the Knoxville News Sentinel, with the University of Tennessee now, but we want to, I want to recognize you. So, Ms. Cotney, are we ready? Okay.
Item 7, consent agenda.
I moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item 8A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-171, complaints and appeals to the board as amended.
Second.
Uh, motion, we're all competing tonight, yes. Motion made by Susan Horn, seconded by Tony Norman. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Item 8B has been postponed. 9A, approve receipt of funds from a Share Our Strength grant in the amount of $2,000 in memory of Cindy McConkey for the School Nutrition Department and Coordinated School Health Program, to promote healthy nutrition in school breakfast with English language learner students.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
9B, approve receipt of funds from a URS CH2M Oak Ridge LLC U-COR education grant in the amount of $1,500 designated to the District STEM Program.
I moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
9C, approve receipt of funds from a Hold Kids Foundation Grant in the amount of $2,000 designated to enlarge the community vegetable garden, build a kiosk, and purchase supplies for the garden at Fulton High School.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, any discussion first on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
9D, approve receipt of tools and equipment from a Tennessee Collision Repair Education Foundation Grant valued at $5,000 for South Door High School.
I moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
9E, approve acceptance of Teachers of Critical Languages Program Grant and Program Host Agreement with the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs of the United States Department of State, for a fully funded teacher of modern Arabic at Bearden High School, for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
10N, approve contract with Kingston Sewer Septic Draining Cleaning Service Incorporated for pumping of grease traps, for the term of May 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
10B, approve contracts with Skilled Services LLC, Investa Housing Solutions LLC, for provision of portable classroom buildings for the term of May 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Hill. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
10C, approve service agreement with Moncedo for provision of website and accessibility compliance for the term of May 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2019, at a cost of $6,480 using Public Affairs Department funds.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Approve contracts with Learning Labs Incorporated and Technical Training Aids for provision of advanced manufacturing lab equipment for career and technical education, at an approximate cost of $250,000 using Federal Car Perkins Grant and District CTE funds, for the term of May 1, 2018, through April 30th, 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
10E, approve contracts with Kids Place Incorporated, Kids Place at Sequoia, Kid Time, Shades of Development, and YMCA of East Tennessee, for provision of after-school care program services, for the term of August 1, 2018, through July 31, 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
11A, approve Knox County Schools Adoption of Textbooks for Career and Technical Education, Fine Arts, Physical Education and Wellness, and Science.
I moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
11B, approve special courses for high school curriculum, honors organic and biochemistry, humanities, Leadership 1, Leadership 2, Leadership 3, and peer tutoring.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
11C, approve fiscal year 2018 budget line item transfers for the General Purpose Fund in the amount of $206,777.
Second.
Okay, item C, yes, okay. Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So, 11D, approve fiscal year 2019 school nutrition fund budget at the major category level for $26,685,000.
Okay, I lost track. Mr. Norman and Ms. Owen, motion made by them. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Items 11E through G have been deferred to the called meeting.
Okay. So, Ms. Roundtree?
Okay.
Move to public forum now.
We'll move to public forum. Our first speaker is Melody May. Okay, if Melody comes back in, we'll get her back in. John Butler, Reverend John Butler. Okay, I think Reverend Butler left. Janay Teke, my teak? Hopefully I got that right.
Reverend may I speak?
Yes. Ms. Chandler, what?
She, yes, you have, do you know, did some of these people leave? I'm guessing that's what you're coming to tell me.
Yes, Reverend Butler had to go to do Bible study, and so he asked if I would take his spot, may I do that?
I don't, I think we just need to go in order, Ms. Chandler, but thank you. I think, does the board need to vote on that?
Yeah, we usually do.
Ms. Fugit?
We don't usually do it, but I'm fine if she does.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Chandler, they're fine with it. Take his place.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have this welcome spring East Tennessee allergy thing going this week, but I, I'm thankful for this opportunity. I appreciate that you're just doing due diligence.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Chandler, were you signed up to speak? Sorry, that's what I was trying to-
Yes, we thought you were-
That was the clarification. When we moved the budget discussion, Ms. Dethridge was gonna ask me to speak, and so when Mr. Butler left, he asked that I have that time. I, I'm, he asked that I would take that time. I'm fine if you don't want me to do that.
I don't think we can grant that if you're not signed up to speak on public forum.
No problem.
Thank you, though.
Tiffany Nicely. And then after Tiffany is gonna be Colleen Martinez and Josh Martinez, if they're still here.
My name is Tiffany Nicely, I reside in Knox County, Tennessee, and I'm speaking to you on behalf as a parent of three Knox County children in need of gifted services in the county, and as a gifted and talented instructional coach. This is my 26th year working in this district, and 19 years as a classroom teacher, and seven as a GT instructional coach. A little over a year ago, in January of 2017, I spoke to this board, and spoke about all the amazing things we were doing in our department, to highlight our work, and this board was so impressed by what they heard, that they voted for additional positions to be added to the 2017-18 school budget, or budget for the, this school year. So, last fall, my job started, and it's included serving two schools, at Karnes Elementary and Beaumont Magnet Academy. My job also included a lead coach component, where I served much like a lead teacher, traveling to other elementary schools, and able to gain insight while I evaluated other GT coaches, to gain an in-depth look at what those services looked like across all demographics in this district. And I can confidently tell you by observing this wide scope of services, that we were not, and are not, serving mostly with student support. We've never been a structure that has been mostly student-supported in the eight years that gifted instructional coaching has existed in this district. Currently, this job has always encompassed a combination of teacher support, along with student support. We have five coaching models, utilizing Canvas, which is a personalized learning management system, we have a modeling instructional model, we have a co-teaching model, we provide enrichment resources for teachers to use in their classrooms, and we did also have a small group pull-out. So for me, specifically in these seven years, I've provided over 100, over 100 professional development rated trainings, at the school level, at the district level, at the state level, and at the national level. Not only do we train other teachers, we're constantly working peer-to-peer to train each other, on the latest research and the best strategies for advanced learners. They're our number one priority, and no one else in this district can make that statement. This maintains compliance with Title II-A funding, supporting other teachers through professional development. Pushing into classrooms at Karnes, where I was scheduled to serve three days a week, I model lessons. I co-teach lessons with teachers in every single grade level, in grades 3, 4, and 5. That's 27 teachers affecting almost 650 students. That's just me, one coach. This lowered the student-teacher ratio, and allowed the use of advancing strategies and advancing resources that benefited all students while training teachers at the same time. This also maintains compliance with Title II-A funding, creating advanced resources to be added to a district-wide Canvas page that contains hundreds of these resources, listed by grade levels for grades K through 8, that all KCS teachers can access and use in their classrooms to support the needs of gifted students. This also is in compliance with Title II-A funding. The small group instruction that I was doing at Karnes and Beaumont, it involved 132 students, including conference calls between these two schools, and having the same lessons town to town, or across town from one another. This is the only piece of our service that was not in compliance, when we were notified that in November of 2017, we were told, the day after Thanksgiving, that we were going to be restructured as a GT department, and we would be cut and losing one-third of our department, meaning that we would go down from 20 coaches to 13. Although shocked, we decided that we were going to have to, we were explained about the non-compliance for Title II-A funding, and this meant changes were gonna have to occur within our services. But we couldn't talk about it. We weren't supposed to discuss these changes, because everything was still changing. So we couldn't explain to teachers and students why our schedules were changing, almost daily. We cut, four schools were added to my load of two, so I'm now serving six schools, including Pleasant Ridge, Bearden, Ferrigate Intermediate, and South Knox Elementary. No more time for pushing into classrooms, no more time for professional development. I am spread very thinly across the district, and at this point, now, in January of 2018, now I'm mostly student support because of the changes the district had made. Remember me saying that we got together and we made changes and adjusted it? We have a plan, a plan for 13 of us that are left, to be 100% compliant with Title II-A funding. But then we hear Dr. Iswick's recommendations, that we be adjusted at 8, and that's no more than ELA or math in this department. I urge you to keep us 13 strong, so that we can implement the plan that we have for serving the 4,668 students that we currently serve, in this county, that need our help. Thank you.[1728.16][1728.16](APPLAUSE).
Colleen?
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm talking to you today about the gifted and talented program. I'm, I'm a parent of two, who attend Cedar Bluff Elementary School. They both qualify for gifted and talented services, and the way the budget looks now, if you cut 500,000 from the program for gifted and talented, my children will no longer have the pull-out classes that they currently have now. And to tell you the truth, it's not much now, it's only 45 minutes a week, and that's really not a lot. And I have a prepared statement. In making this cut and not supporting pull-out programs, what are you going to do instead? Are you going to promote accelerated, or promote acceleration and ability grouping? Are you promoting gifted IEPs? And if so, will KCS provide more special education teachers focusing on gifted education? I believe in an appropriate education for all students. KCS is a big supporter- KCS is a big supporter of RTI programs. Students receive 30 minutes a day of interventions with a highly qualified educator. I ask you today, what daily 30-minute small group intervention with a highly qualified educator is available for students that are above grade level? My children receive only 45 minutes of that type of intervention. After the budget cut, they receive nothing. GT students succeed on TN-ready tests and therefore need no interventions. So one asks, why spend the time and money on these students? I ask, why not? Classroom teachers cannot give every single learner the appropriate education that they deserve. They physically and financially can't. We don't provide the resources and support needed for them to do this successfully. This much has been acknowledged with the emphasis of the RTI funding and the unwavering support of that program. I support it as well, I, I want everyone to learn how to read and I, I support helping everyone. I beg of you today, please don't forget the students who sit on the other side of the spectrum. These students need support too. These students learn quickly and finish work faster than most students in their classroom. These students lose interest in learning and often complain at home that they are bored. There's only so much reading on their own that they can handle. If anything, the gifted and talented program isn't funded enough. Instead of making cuts to the program, we should be talking about how you can increase the GT services in each school and make it more robust. Knox County Schools is sandwiched between a tier-one research university and a national laboratory and we can't seem to fund a robust GT program. What kind of message does that send to parents who are thinking about moving to the area? I know what kind of message it sends to me. It tells me that KCS doesn't believe in promoting higher-level thinking and supporting exceptionally talented students. It also sends a message that if we want our children to be academically challenged, we should enroll our children in a private school. If the higher achieving students leave our system, what will that do to our excellence gap? I attended public schools in Southern West Virginia. My gifted program was phenomenal. We took field trips to Boston to go on a whale watch, we went to Pittsburgh to visit the Warhol Museum, we visited museums in Washington DC, we went to reading festivals in Johnson City, we visited the Discovery Place. If a tiny county in West Virginia can realize the benefits of a robust gifted program, why can't metropolitan Knoxville realize the benefits as well? My children need more in school. There are only so much, there's only so much their classroom teachers can do. I will not apologize that they learn quickly and need more enrichment to keep them engaged and hungry to learn. Our KCS students need more enrichment, not less. And a less quote, "Failure to help the gifted child is a societal tragedy, the extent of which is difficult to measure but which is surely great. How can we measure the Sonata unwritten, the curative drug undiscovered, the absence of political insight? They are the difference between what we are and what we could be as a society." Thank you.
Josh.
Hi. My name is Josh Martinez and I go to school at Cedar Bluff Elementary. I stand before you today a member of the gifted and talented group with Ms. Atkins as my GT coach. GT has greatly impacted my life, it has given me something to do in my spare time, it has made me think and it has given me an opportunity to be smart. One of KCS's main goals is to make sure that everyone gets an equal education no matter what grade level they are. KCS supports one side of the spectrum with the RTI intervention, which the RTI students get 30 minutes of time each day a week with an educator, but they do not really support GT as much as RTI. GT students only get 45 minutes a week. I like my coach, Ms. Atkins, knowing that she could lose her job because of your budget cuts, cutting the staff of 13 to five, is troubling. I am in the Passion Projects, which is a branch of GT. My project is to get translating devices to students and families at Cedar Bluff who do not speak English. This could, my project could change some people's lives because the translating device, I hope, will give people a better education or job. Shutting down gifted and talented is basically shutting down that canal of wonderful thoughts that comes from students in GT. If it weren't for GT, I do not think that I would be doing this project for the translating devices. Teachers can only do so much to support GT students. These programs help kids think out of the box. These people that are in GT could be our future leaders. You need to help them grow to their full potential as you are doing for the RTI students to get them on grade level. Honestly, if we are talking about the GT program, we should be talking about how to fund GT more. GT already isn't a lot, but it could be more. Today, I ask you to think about the students who are above grade level, bored in school and have nothing to do. There is only so much reading and extra schoolwork students can do. Magnet schools are good and Magnet schools encourage higher-level thinking in programs such as GT. It is unfortunate for me to hear that you're wanting to cut the funds for these schools. If you are cutting all the programs for higher-level thinking students, sometimes I only come to school because of those programs. School board representatives, before you make these cuts, think of who you have harmed and who you have helped with these cuts. We need a mutualistic relationship between the school board and the schools. Thank you for your time today and I hope you reconsider your decision to cut the funds for higher-level thinking programs in schools.
Hodges. Rachel Hodges.
Hello, my name is Rachel Hodges, I'm a parent and an employer in Knox County. I've lived here for the past 13 years with my husband, we have two children in Knox County Schools and I'm coming tonight to speak to you about the cuts to the GT program. Echoing the concerns that you have already heard from multiple people tonight, our GT program is underfunded. We can't stand to have a cut in this program. I have a child in the GT program who looks forward every week to seeing Ms. Burgard come to her school and tells me all the time about all the different activities and the hands-on things and the STEM ideas that they get to do that they don't get to do in the regular class. We had issues in first grade and in second grade with this child being bored and not wanting to go to school because she's bored and we don't challenge our older children, or not our older children, our higher achieving children. You have core extension every week for 30 minutes, you waste basically two and a half hours of my daughter's educational time every week attending to the RTI children. By all means, they need the help, but my child is stuck over in the corner with everybody else who is either on grade level or high and given a worksheet and told to free read while they work with the RTI children. That's unacceptable. You're ignoring those children and by cutting the GT program, what you're going to do is take those GT teachers who have been going in and training the teachers on how better to serve these students, you're cutting their ability to teach their teachers how to challenge these students so that they actually still care about school and still want to come. As an employer, I want children that can think out of the box because they will be the employees who will then work with me or the coworkers who work with me to help take care of patients and see things from a different viewpoint. You are hurting our society when you are cutting GT. And when I emailed my board representative to find out the details and what the reasoning was, the chief academic officer's response was sent back to me and it seemed to be in the response that you guys compared the GT coaches to the same thing as the coaches that you have for reading and math and science and social studies. Those coaches are not at all trained on how to teach advanced students. You're comparing apples to oranges and trying to act like it's the same fruit. It is unacceptable to do this and when you look at the state website, the State Department of Education cites, "Comprehensive analysis of over 100 years of educational research has found the following: Students benefited from being in classes and grouped within classes from, with peers of their likabilities. It even gave better benefits when you actually differentiated them out into their core subjects and differentiated the children who are high learners. When you group them with their peers, they over, they outperform what they would when they're in the classroom." And it even went on, "Curriculums should be specifically designed for gifted students, provide engaging content and experiences, and be taught by teachers trained in gifted education." This cut would eliminate the goal that is according to the state website, what we're supposed to be doing in KCS. The work should not simply be a higher volume of the same content, instead the curriculum in an advanced setting should be providing higher-order thinking skills, which is exactly what our GT program does. And the, the effort of this board to cut it further with the budget cuts is just insane. Students do not grow when they're spread out among classrooms or in learning groups and that was in reference to the advanced students do not grow and this is on the Tennessee State Department of Education site when you look up gifted program. If you haven't read that, I highly encourage you to go read the 123-page document about the gifted program. I've read quite a bit of it, if you haven't, I would be happy to meet with you further and discuss it. My final statement, she chose one of my quotes already, but the other one is, "Not every child has equal talent or equal ability or equal motivation, but every child has the equal right to develop their talent, their ability, and their motivation." That quote's from John F. Kennedy. Her quote that she quoted was James Gallagher, just in case you're unfamiliar with him, he is a huge person in education as he is considered one of the parents of the landmark legislation that we refer to as IDEA for Special Education and Higher and Gifted Learning. James Gallagher was the researcher for that. So I urge you as a parent, as a business owner in Knox County, please do not cut our gifted program. Our children need to be challenged. Our children who don't have parents, who are well-educated and don't know how to get them the resources that they need, those are the children who are cut, who are hurt by this cut. They don't have the support at home to get them what they need, to push them to be their best of ability. If we're here for excellence for all children, it needs to be all children and not just those who are struggling.
I'm Janay Tiki Matike, I believe my name was called earlier?
It was, yeah.
Do I have permission to share?
Yeah, you can, you can go and then Matt, you'll be after Janay.
I'm sorry, Matt, you. My name is Janay Tiki Matike. My mom put me on a plane when I was 16. She said, "With this ticket, you will fulfill our dreams." So I left all I knew behind with no goodbyes. I can still see the bowed heads and closed eyes. My mom said, "You're going to a land where all is fair and you are our only chance of ever getting there." And as I looked through the plane, all I could see were my childhood dreams of going to America, land of the free. Where I come from, there's no chance at a better life and you're lucky to have a meal at sunrise. See, my papa died when I was away at Catholic school. I never got to grieve, attend his funeral. At 14, I became the man of the house. I had to put food in my sister's mouths. I worked all day in the sun-scorched heat to earn less than an American dollar for us to eat. And all we had was lost at the cost of my seat on the plane to the land if I could beat anything. See, I stepped off the plane with empty pockets, but weighed down by my mom's dreams for me to be a doctor. Upon my arrival, there was no welcome to the USA. I was greeted with blank stares and frowns on the face. I can't believe I got a scholarship to college now I can make my mom proud and be a doctor. Dear Mama, I miss you all. Give Uli Matine and Gaia all my love. Here in America, it's like nothing I've ever seen, so many people just throwing away our family dream. And you won't believe, we get through meals a day, it's all you can eat, they call it buffet. So why do so many people here still complain? And I wash up every day with clean hot water. No one has the way to use my old dirty agua. Here, there are machines to wash and dry our clothes, all I have to do is press start to dry and fold. Now there should be a bit of money in the envelope, I hope it's enough to buy some rice, fufu, and soap and some students at university don't even go to class. I guess they can't afford to fail, I have to pass. I guess so long we here at university, no one else speaks pidgin about query. Most of all, the blacks have turned their backs away from me. I guess they forgot I call them ancestry, that my people were forced here during slavery. See, my perfect dream would be to live and die in my homeland, free of hunger and strife. But some Europeans came and devoured the beauty of the motherland for riches and gold, they left us to fight and kill and sell our souls. All right, Mama, now I have to go to work, but not before I tell you what I saw in the land of the free, men killing men for more money. And in class, most people laugh at me when I speak. They talk to me in a slow cadence just because I articulate differently. I wish I just had one friend to understand that I'm buying tickets here for my whole fam. Mama, I'm the only hope you have at a better life. I can't wait to see my sisters, Uli Matine and Gaia, play safely outside with no war or danger or when you, Mama, can cook more than fufu and rice. I love you, Mama. Grace and peace until next time, I write. See, on my heavy heart, I'm carrying my family's dreams. They all die if I don't succeed 'cause I'm the only ticket to the land of the free. They all die if I don't succeed. My name is Janay Tiki Matike. I currently work with Knox County Schools as a family community liaison and serve a lot of our international students, a lot of our refugees and a lot of our immigrants. And I come to you on behalf of Project Grad, just really believing that this program is important for all of our students as well as our refugee and immigrant students. A lot of our students come here with dreams and desires to go to school, to do well, to help their family and some of them are literally the only ticket, the only chance for their family to have success. And so it's a program that we need. Today, I was actually at one of my schools and I happened to walk in and the student said that he was hungry and I didn't have anything to give him. And so I happened to be at a school that has Project Grad there and so I was able to go to the Project Grad office and ask someone and they were able to give him crackers and a granola bar. And so it's something that's very important for our families and for our students, for their community, for their families and their further futures. Thank you all so much, God bless you.
Good evening, my name is Matt Cheek, I'm a GT coach and I hope to reiterate some of the things that have been said already, but also to build on some of those things. So it's 12 o'clock on a Tuesday at Bell Morris Elementary School and I turn the corner where my fifth grade math GT group meets. As I get closer, I see the smiling faces of students eagerly awaiting GT group for the day. They are jittery, but that doesn't bother me because they're excited to learn. In this group, there's a boy who reminds me of me when I was in fifth grade. He is bright, he is witty, he has a sarcasm that extends beyond his years. Like me, he's spent his life battling the stereotypes and expectations of others. He, like I when I was a kid, I'm sure has been asked countless times, "Why do you talk white?" Or been asked, or been told, "You're not really black." Or maybe even been called an Oreo, you know, black on the outside or white on the inside. He will most likely go the entirety of his academic career internalizing this struggle until one day he looks around his AP US History class, realizing he's the only black one. Caught in this place where he doubts even if he belongs. This world isn't good to black boys in 2018. The word gifted is synonymous with everything the world believes we are not. The expectation is that we shouldn't be smart, that we are lazy, that we are threatening, that we are disruptive, that school isn't for us and that the only way out is with a ball in our hands. But today is different. You see, today, our worlds collide. For 30 minutes, I get the opportunity to stand before him and so many others, inspire them that they are not what the world thinks of them. They can be like Benjamin Banneker or Major E. Lee Brown or Oak Ridge's own Lonnie Johnson and if you're not familiar with those people, you can join my Canvas page on Canvas because my GT students definitely do. You see, GT is a place where walls come down. It's a place where stereotypes of the world no longer define us. It's a safe place where their exceptionalities are valued and encouraged. It's a place where it matters less about what you look like and more about what you can do with your brain. A place where challenges are met with joy and hurdles create opportunity. We explore, we question, we grow together. We must find the future problems. I do not think the GT changes were out of ill will. However, I believe critical pieces of information have been left out, thus minimizing the role that GT plays in our schools and the impact that it has had on lives of students and teachers. Our department was already cut from 20 to 13 in December, and the middle school GT program was eliminated entirely, which I was a part of. We've already had our cuts, and we are already doing everything we can to deliver the same amount of service. My question is, how do we expect eight coaches to replicate the work of 20? Under the proposed budget cuts, GT students at schools like Bluegrass, Cedar Bluff, Sequoia, Hardin Valley will receive, on average, 2.4 days of service in their classrooms next year. This is in comparison to the 60 days of service that they received this school year. That's a loss of nearly 58 days of service. The numbers are even worse for our inner-city schools and schools with small populations, schools like South Knox, New Hopewell, and Bell Morris. My question is, how can we present this to parents and reassure them that it's what's best for their kids? We have never been solely student support. To imply that GT coaches have only been servicing students in small groups does not only diminish the impact coaches have had on classroom instruction, but belittles the effort and countless hours we have spent co-planning, co-teaching, modeling, and creating resources. My question is, how can we present this to teachers and say this eases their already overwhelming workload? Our work should not be compared to the work of curriculum teams. We serve two entirely different purposes, and each is vital to the success for our district. Our goal is to provide advancing strategies to gifted learners. I've taught advanced strategies for math and reading. Under the model that our department has designed and has been working towards, we have been in compliance with Tennessee's guidelines for special education, as well as Title II-A. Parents have opted out to pursue gifted education through the Gen Ed Track in Knox County in lieu of an IEP under special education. I've sought the input of a professor at the University of Tennessee, as well as some law students. And they have assured me that if these changes go into action, that students and parents will have ground to ask for 4,600 IEPs to make up for the students who are being served right now. And I see that my time is running out. But I want to finish with this. I want to finish with this. "Is so in a community and city where homes are more familiar with the words of abandonment than they are with consistency, how can we in good conscience abandon our gifted learners again?" I appreciate your time and thank you.
Jessica Everett.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Everett. I'm also here from Knox County. I work with the Gifted and Talented Department currently. So I want to first take the time to thank you all for taking the time to listen and consider all the voices you've heard over the last week. I know it's a lot of voices. I watched from at home, so I know you all were here late on Monday night. But I need you to really listen closely, because my voice tonight does not represent myself, it does not represent my department, it represents 354 gifted students that I serve currently. And I'm trying to keep it together, because I take my job very passionately and very personally. So, please bear with me if I shake or if I get nervous. I want to make my kids proud. I'm a gifted and talented coach serving five schools, which lie in five different districts. Not one, five. This is a department in service that touches all areas of the district at every school. The state and county priorities place focus on our struggling students. I understand that. The truth is, all of our students deserve an equal support in their educational pursuits. Our Tier III students receive 30 minutes daily in a small group intervention. That's approximately 180 days a year. That accumulates to 90 hours over the total course of the year, and that's the equivalent of approximately 13 full school days. If this budget gets approved, that is 13 full days of our students having no instructional support. That's simply not okay. We were able to support these needs with the 20 coaches we were allotted at the beginning of the 2017-2018 school year. We are currently struggling to meet those needs with the 13 we have been whittled down to. How are eight coaches going to completely support this need? My role with the district is in one, in education, which we call the trenches. I'm sure you're all familiar with that term. We call it the trenches, not because we feel we're in the worst position, not because it's dangerous, but because it's the front line. We are passionate about what we do. We love our students and the challenges we have the opportunities to engage them with. In GT, our battle within the classroom is engagement and stagnant growth of these upper top students. I work with teachers to support their classroom instruction by modeling, co-teaching, and providing them with rigorous and complex tasks and resources. I meet with students daily and reflect on their needs to better inform my work with their teachers, instructional coaches at the schools, and with them. Our teachers have their plates full. They work hard all day long, giving their best to their students, and then are met with an equal amount of paperwork and meetings at the end of the day. We ask them to help create behavior plans, IEP goals, and plan differentiated lessons for all abilities. Asking them to take on the service that I have been able to provide as a full-time job is not the answer. There are simply not enough hours in the day. These teachers, even with all of that on their plates, still take the time to reach out to me about their students that are advanced and in need of extra support. That is where my frontline lies. Our program provides our students with access to advanced and gifted thinking routines and strategies beyond that of the current curriculum. We help see their learning through the lens of their thinking, propelling them to thinking on a deeper level and grow in their metacognition. My goal as a coach is to ignite and kindle my students' curiosity and love of learning. Through the use of the various advanced structures we put in place, students are encouraged to question everything and look deeper at the meaning of events, operations, and stories. We are able to do that in our small group sessions. There's another layer to our role as gifted and talented teachers. Yes, we work with our students on academics and challenge their thinking, but the part you might not consider is the other side, and that is helping them find their people. In any given classroom across Knox County, you have a large academic range. Depending on the school, you may see some that are more below level or more proficient. But regardless, there are few, far fewer gifted students in any given room than any other cohort of students. My students need each other. They need to know that we acknowledge their needs and want to meet their needs as a district. They also need to know that time to know that no matter how nerdy or how big of a misfit they may seem, inside the walls of our GT room, they have their people, they have a support group. Every time I meet with my students, I ask them about interests or activities as they're coming in. I ask questions about their research or their projects that they are conducting on the side, generally not required, just for fun. I have the opportunity to be that person for those kids. My students come to me with struggles. Some of them are as small as organizational issues, and others are as large as some of our spectrum behaviors. We do have twice exceptional students in Knox County. Without a coach, those daily supports fall away from those students. I recognize that the funding under Title II-A dictates that we can no longer continue supporting GT the way we have been. In a dream world, I know as a board you would love to fully fund the 20 coaches that we had in place at the beginning of this year and to continue supporting students directly. I understand that, and you all are in a very tough position. But as I said, I'm here to speak for my kids, so I'm sorry. I wish I had known that the budget needed problem solving. To be honest, I would have passed it along to my students, and they would have enjoyed the challenge to help.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time tonight to listen to us. And I am going to close with a quote that my children asked me to read to you all. Children who are not challenged are cheated. Please do not cheat my students.
Shelley Weiss. And after Shelley is Anastasia Armsworth and Paul Armsworth.
Hi. I want to first all say, I appreciate the fact that some of you are really listening intently to what some of these people are coming up hearing saying. The first thing I see when I log on to the Knox County Schools homepage is the quote, "Excellence for every child," and the word "every" is in bold print. What does the word excellence even mean? The definition of the word excellent, according to the dictionary.com, is excelling, superiority. Some synonyms for that would be brilliance, greatness, merit, caliber. The purpose of me being here today is to convince the Board of Education that eliminating some of the GT services for our elementary schools is not only detrimental, but also an inequitable act. As mandated by the state of Tennessee, every Knox County elementary school spends 30 days doing intervention with our Tier II and III children. In our fifth grade, that means about 30 of 180 students receive small group instruction in an attempt to move them to grade level. Some of these children do have learning disabilities, but many are just behind, and these 30 minutes daily just might be what is needed to get them on grade level. But where is the equitable time and money allocation for the special ed students at the opposite end of the spectrum? In the past, GT coaches pull these students for reading and/or math enrichment 30 minutes a week. GT is not a reward for well-behaved children or those that turn in perfect work. It is, however, an academic necessity for children with exceptional abilities and potential, and these kids want and need to learn. GT provides the services of providing them opportunities for working and learning at their readiness level, not at their peers' readiness level. It's not a privilege, nor is it a self-esteem booster. It's a validation of their ability. We should stretch kids within and beyond their potential, beyond what we might have expected them to be. Hey, that's a pretty novel concept, isn't it? According to the National Association of Gifted Children, more than seven in 10 teachers of gifted students noted that their brightest students were not going to be challenged or given a chance to thrive in classrooms. Additionally, gifted students need gifted program, because the general education program is not capable of meeting these needs, either because of lack of training, or because there's pressure in the classroom with the teachers that are faced to raise the performance of their struggling students. It's more than just challenging these students. Students have been shown that gifted program positively influences students' futures. There's a whole lot of studies, I don't have time to talk about them, but one of the studies I looked at was a sample of 2,409 intellectually talented adolescents that were assessed on the SAT at the age of 13 after receiving GT services that were tracked for 25 years. Among this sample, there were 817 patents and published 93 books. One person had been awarded the Fields Medal in Mathematics, and another won the John Bates Clark Medal for the Most Outstanding Economics under the age of 40. I also did research about some of the other states and what they were doing with the gifted and talented program. I'm leaving all this information here for you if you want to look at it. Interestingly enough, the same study said that a new commissioner of education for our estate instructed the department include a Division of College and Career Readiness, and it was committed to partnering with special populations to fund a position to oversee GT education in the state of Tennessee. Perhaps, though, maybe there's another thought behind the action of taking away funds from the GT program. We're always told at teachers that we need to close the gap between the high and low groups. Hey, what better way to close the gaps than not let the high group achieve? I've been teaching for 18 years, and I'm a Level V teacher. I've taught advanced math for the last six years in my fifth grade. I've witnessed my fifth graders doing eighth-grade math skills, high school skills, and loving it. They are eating it up. I'm not only a teacher, but I'm a parent to two third graders that were fortunate enough to have Ms. Everett as their GT coach this year. And I'm sad, but I'm also furious at this decision that is being made by the county and our school board. And I'm going to just free rein the whole rest of this. I taught two classes of 31 math kids at Hardin Valley Elementary that are advanced honor students. They were furious when I got on my soapbox today to let them know that their siblings, if they were in the same position, in the next few years will not have the abilities and the push that they have been given. They wrote letters, they came up with a petition, and here's the budget that they went through, and they highlighted things that they thought you could cut. If you need help with cutting the budget, it's highlighted right here in yellow, and I'll leave it with you if you want to look at it. Thank you for your time.
Asia?
Hello. My name is Anastasia Armsworth. I'm the mother of two honor students at Beaumont Magnet Academy, and I'm speaking for myself and Paul, as he was not able to attend this evening. Both of our daughters have been identified as being gifted and talented, so I am here to express my concern over the proposed budget cuts to the gifted and talented program. My fourth grader, Rose, started participating in pull-out GT groups in third grade, which at that time was the earliest time that Knox County Schools started doing anything with gifted children. She benefited, she did, however, in kindergarten, also benefit from special weekly reading groups led by a GT coach in kindergarten, which she did at Rocky Hill Elementary School. Rose loves her weekly pull-out GT sessions and the work that she does related to those sessions. She tells me, and this is a quote, "It's the only time in the week she feels like she's really thinking." Before she started GT, she complained of being bored at school and never learning anything. Our second grader, Isabella, entered kindergarten early, so she was formally identified as being gifted at age four. She started participating in pull-out GT groups at school this year when Knox County started identifying GT students as young as kindergarten. My husband and I were thrilled to see that Knox County was making accommodation for these younger gifted students. Isabella, like her big sister, enjoys the challenge of learning new things, something she experiences in her GT pull-out sessions and not frequently at other times during the week. Both girls require the extra attention and teaching that their GT sessions provide to help them move towards achieving their full learning potential. According to Bob Thomas's memorandum, "We are implementing a new approach to gifted and talented services that will train teachers to provide these supports." My understanding is that, and it's been said, that we started with 20 coaches in November, we cut the number of coaches down to 13, and now they want to cut five more. This is untenable. If the changes go through, we won't have enough coaches to work with students, we won't have enough coaches to work with the teachers to provide the supports either. Being intellectually gifted is a Tennessee state-identified disability for which a student qualifies for special education services. Therefore, giftedness should receive the same attention and support as other disabilities. Teachers get support from assistance and special education teachers for students with disabilities and disorders. They require the same support for gifted students. As formerly-trained teachers, my husband and I know how difficult it is to differentiate learning material for a class. Teachers have enough work to do without adding the weight of specialized teaching for gifted students to the list as well. We feel like Knox County Schools needs to do more, not less, to support gifted students. It's heartbreaking to hear your child say she only uses her brain once a week at school. GT programming has ensured that our children are learning at their potential and that they remain engaged and challenged by schoolwork. My fourth grader is very concerned about the future of her pull-out GT groups. The last question she asked me tonight was, "What's going to happen to the GT program?" I told her I didn't know, but I promised her that I wasn't going to let it go without a fight. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Lauren Hobson.
Lauren Hobson, Knox County. As I look up there on the stage, I consider many of you friends, and I know your heart. I know that there have been several things said about you guys and posted about you guys that are just patently untrue about your nature, and I want to recognize that. And I know some of you in the past have been forced into making decisions that are part of the reason we are where we are today. And I know none of you wants to make cuts anywhere. And as I've listened to parents of other gifted children, I myself am a parent of a gifted child, who I know was also one of those children that may have been bored in elementary school because his teacher was doing RTI, and he was relieved to get to middle school where he could be more challenged, and he is thrilled being in high school. But as educators, making sure that our most vulnerable kids are taken care of is or should be our core belief. I know that reading scores were referenced by some of you the other night as a justification for cutting some of the programs, like Project Grad or STEM, and maybe putting that money into other reading programs or shoring that up. However, we, many of you, have spent the last four to five years telling everyone that would listen that standardized test scores never tell the full story. Lauren Hobson.
Lauren Hobson, Knox County. As I look up there on the stage, I consider many of you friends, and I know your heart. I know that there have been several things said about you guys and posted about you guys that are just patently untrue about your nature, and I want to recognize that. And I know some of you in the past have been forced into making decisions that are part of the reason we are where we are today, and I know none of you wants to make cuts anywhere. And as I've listened to parents of other gifted children, I myself am a parent of a gifted child who I know was also one of those children that may have been bored in elementary school because his teacher was doing RTI, and he was relieved to get to middle school where he could be more challenged, and he is thrilled being in high school. But as educators, making sure that our most vulnerable kids are taken care of is or should be our core belief. I know that reading scores were referenced by some of you the other night as a justification for cutting some of the programs like Project Grad or STEM and maybe putting that money into other reading programs or shoring that up. However, we, many of you, have spent the last four to five years telling everyone that would listen that standardized test scores never tell the full story. First, our system is extremely flawed at best when it comes to test scores. Secondly, standardized test scores will never tell you how special programs affected attendance, school discipline, a kid's joy for learning, or who might have found a passion or a career in something that they loved rather than something they might not have been very good at. I've been thinking a lot lately how it must feel to be a struggling reader and be forced into more and more and more reading programs, and I think about myself being a person who pretends to sing well along with the radio but is probably a terrible singer, and how it would feel to me to be forced into, to a program where I had to sing with other people who are good singers seven hours a day, five days a week, and have to sing in front of them. And maybe I would get a little better, but I would hate it. I wouldn't want to go to school if that's what I had to do. So we need to really think about cutting these programs. We will not make any of our schools better by pulling the funds from them, and we will certainly not improve schools in struggling communities by pulling funds and programs for them. I'll be honest, I never taught at a magnet school, I've never taught at a project grad school, but what I do know with my history over the last five years is that every person that makes the effort to show up, to speak at a board meeting, to stay for hours, speaks not just for themselves, but many other people. I'm not sure what to multiply eighty-seven by. That was the number of speakers that were here on Monday night, but it's gotta be a lot of people, so please listen to them. But on another note, in regards to our MOU that seems to have us in fear of asking county commission for more money, why is an MOU with the mayor being honored that way but not an MOU with our teachers? When teachers are striking in several other states, which are right-to-work states as in Tennessee, this is not the time to forget or disrespect our educators. And I'm not saying that just to the school board, I'm saying it to our funding bodies, to the county commission, and to our state legislator. In Knox County and in Tennessee, we are really proud that we don't raise taxes, but that's about to be the only thing we can be proud of. My son and his bandmates at Hall's High School won an unprecedented number of competitions this year. They are an award-winning drum line, which I wish all of you could see, but the season's over now. They're gonna go to world championships next year, and I would really love for him to be in drum line next year without having to sell a kidney. It's time to go to county commission, it's time to talk to our state legislators, and I appreciate Ms. Hill and whoever may have done that that didn't mention it. We have got to demand more money for all our kids. Thank you.
Avery, Avery Parkey. Okay, I don't think Avery's here. And then after LeAnn, Ann, Ann Orpert will be after LeAnn.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Thomas, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight, and thank you to those of you who responded to my emails. My name is LeAnn Hahn, and I am a Knox County resident in District Two and the proud principal of the Career Magnet Academy. Seven years ago, I was fortunate enough to help build the Communications Magnet Program at Fulton High School and experience the power of magnet programming for the first time. When students have the opportunity to choose their school based on a talent, an interest, or an ability, amazing things happen. Engagement increases, grades go up, kids interact within a culturally diverse school, an opportunity they would not have been afforded if they stayed at their zone school. And most importantly, kids have unique opportunities that are designed specifically to nurture their talents and abilities. The impact of these things cannot be measured by an assessment or rated on any scale. For the past two years, I've seen those same amazing things but on a much larger scale at Career Magnet Academy. My scholars bravely choose to leave everything that is familiar to them to come to CMA. They and their families put their trust in us to provide them with an experience unlike any other in the county. By design, our program affords us the opportunity to graduate scholars who have earned a diploma plus. That plus can be hours towards a TCAT welding certification, a relevant and meaningful industry certification, or hours towards an associate's degree at Pellicippi State Community College. Typically, we enroll students in Pellicippi State as juniors in high school. They spend half their day with us and half their day as college students, giving them the opportunity to earn up to fifty hours towards an associate's degree before they graduate high school. We ask our students to prove they are college-ready by the end of their sophomore year, which is a full two years earlier than their peers in the rest of the county. In order to prepare them for this task, we use our magnet allocation to provide ACT tutoring, to pay for the mandatory ACT test our sophomores must take before enrolling in Pellicippi, and to provide students with rigorous instruction to include progress, project-based learning experiences in their classroom. In addition to preparing scholars academically for college admissions, we also use our magnet allocation to prepare them to make the major life decisions that college students must make when they're fifteen years old. We spend a significant amount of time and resources exposing students to job opportunities in high-skill, high-demand, high-wage areas. Without that critical piece, our scholars, many of whom are first-generation college students, would lack the information and the skills necessary to make these decisions. Teachers also make a tough choice when coming to CMA to teach in an environment where the expectations are different than those in traditional high schools. Our teachers work tirelessly to expose our scholars to careers and college options and to prepare them for college early. By using some of our magnet allocation, we are able to provide relevant and timely professional development to teachers as well as the resources needed to carry out the projects they expose their students to. Lastly, our allocation helps us to recruit new students. I know that you are concerned about our enrollment, but cutting our allocation will not help with that issue, only make it worse. I would be remiss if I did not also use this time to advocate for my sister magnet schools. If you have not seen the collaboration that goes on between us, you're missing out. For example, last Friday, our elementary partners allowed our scholars to come do observations and teach many lessons in order to earn their dual credit in their Pellicippi course. This is only one example of many. I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge the tough decision you face and the difficult time all of my colleagues are having dealing with staff and cuts. I understand that cuts are inevitable and that we all have to do our part. I'm asking for a chance to be a part of the conversation, working towards a solution. I'm asking you to consider what cutting the allocation will do to our program. I'm asking you to honor our commitment to the families we serve, and most of all, I'm asking you to be brave like my scholars and make a decision that is in their best interest. Thank you.
And then after Ann is Haley Jones, and then Reverend Valentina McNeil.
Good evening. My name is Ann Orpert. I live in Knox County, and I am the school counselor at Career Magnet Academy. Knox County defines magnet schools as schools which provide a unique opportunity in a specific area or theme that is not offered in other Knox County schools. This is exactly what happens at Career Magnet. On Monday night, the question was raised about enrollment and the number of students transferring from CMA. Those questions were not answered, and I will answer them now. Due to the nature of our programming, thus far, we have only admitted rising freshmen to CMA. It's different than other high schools because other high schools admit and enroll upperclassmen. If we did enroll upperclassmen, we would be able to fill spots that become open when students transfer out. If this is something the board has concerns about, I would ask that you speak with school administrators and Pellicippi administrators, so you all can discuss this prior to making assumptions about what's happening at CMA. In regards to students transferring from CMA, the goal of Career Magnet Academy is for students to experience early post-secondary opportunities, whether it's through classes at Pellicippi State, Tennessee College of Applied Technology, or gaining valuable work certifications. If a student does not meet the academic requirements to experience those opportunities, the parents often choose for them to return to their base school. Those requirements are often set by Pellicippi State and Tennessee College of Applied Technology. There have also been questions raised about the success of magnet programs in general in Knox County. CMA will graduate its first senior class on May sixteenth. One student will actually graduate from Pellicippi State with her associate in science prior to her high school graduation. To, yes, exactly, exactly. To my knowledge, I have worked in Knox County since two thousand and five as a school counselor. To my knowledge, this is the first Knox County high school student to earn an associate's degree while still in high school. In the last three and a half years, students at CMA have earned two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine college hours. In the last three and a half years, students at CMA have earned two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine college hours, as well as one hundred and eighty-one work certifications. Those are certifications and hours that they would not have received at any other high school in Knox County. I define that as success. Finally, I'd like to stress how critical the magnet allocation for Career Magnet Academy is, how valuable it is. Taking away the magnet allocation will be tantamount to taking away our magnet program and consequently our student population. As Ms. Hahn said, we use our magnet allocation for sophomores to take the ACT, which is a requirement for them to attend Pellicippi their junior and senior years. That's the primary reason students choose to enroll at CMA. Without that magnet allocation, there's a very real possibility that Career Magnet would cease to exist because we could not, we could not afford for our students, could not afford them the opportunity to have those college experiences, which is the main reason students transfer into our school. I think the school board needs to be aware of what is happening prior to making decisions to cut funding, and it appears that this board is not aware of the great things that are happening at Career Magnet. If you would like to come and see for yourselves, I invite you to join us tomorrow night for our magnet showcase at CMA from five-thirty to seven. Thank you very much.
Haley Jones, Knox County. I didn't register for the docket to speak at Monday's work session because, as a new teacher and a new resident of East Knoxville, it was important to me to not take up space that a parent or a native member of our community might use to advocate for our kids. And then, on Monday at the work session, I heard the test scores, the reading test scores of third graders used as a weapon against a community. I heard that, and I had to say something, because while I am certainly not interested in speaking for anyone, I am here to speak because of some people. I'm here to speak for ninety-three people. These are my sixth-grade science and social studies students at Vine Middle Magnet School. These children, my kids, are not numbers. They are not third-grade reading test scores, and to strip them of crucial and enriching programming because of data which tells a partial story and is only tangentially related to the topic at hand perpetuates a false narrative in the minds of my kids. That false narrative is that the academic components of school are not for them. For many of my kids, school does not feel like a place where they can experience intellectual success. As a middle-class white woman, who was once a middle-class white girl, I experienced learning from teachers whose culture and understanding of the way in which the world worked more or less reflected my own. Sitting down, staying still, and taking tests with word problems and reading passages that were reflective of my own culture made sense for me. My kids at Vine, ninety-five or so percent of whom do not look like me, or almost any member of the board, have not had that experience. Learning looks different for them because of this, and while not one of my students is a victim and nobody on the east side needs saving, it is the responsibility of those who bear the honorable burden of education to solve this unique problem. And how do we solve unique problems? We solve them in unique ways with solutions that include magnet programming. Like all kids, my kids like working hard at things they believe they are good at. We won the two thousand and sixteen basketball championship because my kids worked hard. My amazing kids are consistently, they consistently win accolades and recognition for what they can do in the areas of athletic and visual arts because they try, they work hard. It's not because they are more suited to what is physical over what is academic, it's because success has taught them that these are places for them. This is where magnet programming comes in. The personnel and technologies afforded to my kids and the kids at Greens, Saramore Green, and other magnet schools interrupts the false narratives that my kids cannot experience success because of what their brains can do. Suddenly, because of magnet programming, school does not mean endeavors which reduce you to a test score. School means recreating the Fertile Crescent with Dr. McKinney in our design lab and taking a virtual reality field trip to Tanzania to study primitive agricultural techniques with my social studies classes. Suddenly, school is a place for my kids want to be. These opportunities provide access to experiences for my kids which prove that with dedication they can experience success at school because of their brains in addition to their bodies. Our magnet programming woos my kids and helps them show themselves what they are capable of. I've seen this energy and engagement spill over into my classroom time and again, and let me tell you, magnet programming helps me as a teacher because my kids are real smart, and they are sure smart enough to get out of places they don't want to be in. As we look at disparities in education and the disproportionate number of problem behaviors reported for children who match certain groups, right, and certain demographic markers, I wonder whether this problem will skyrocket if you take away the opportunities that make learning a place that my kids want to be. My kids are smart enough to know what to do to get out of class. You can imagine what will happen if you take away our magnet funding. And you know, as we talk about places that are worth being, let me say a word about East Knoxville. It is not a place, just like the other parts of our fine city, but with less money. East Knoxville, I have been warmly welcomed into this rich place full of beautiful and smart and funny and stylish people that has a culture all of its own. I am lucky to call myself a member of this community, and so are those kids who traveled in my classroom on a magnet transfer. East Knoxville is a good place to be, like school generally. It is a place worth staying in, but that's not the narrative you sell my kids. When you take money which has been invested in a program that brings kids from other parts of town to us and use it to ship kids from our place to the charter school in Mechanicsville, I know you're being asked for a lot. I'm gonna ask you for one more thing. Please tell the city to fund our schools completely so that the kids at the east side are not pitted against the kids at Gibbs or Hardin Valley Middle. Give us the chance to show up for our kids before the commission, the way we did last Monday. As adults, let's be the adults, let's fight for our kids so they don't have to.
Neil, Reverend McNeil.
Let the church say amen. The Lord works in mysterious ways because this board needs more time to digest the wonderful input in this budget process. Since I'm missing my Bible study to be here tonight, let me use my time to share this with you. In the letter to the church at Galatia, Galatians two, the Apostle Paul publicly confronted and challenged the Apostle Peter, a Jew, for his hypocrisy in dealing with the Gentiles. challenged the Apostle Peter, a Jew, for his hypocrisy in dealing with the Gentiles. The Apostle Paul publicly confronted and challenged the Apostle Peter because he was being double-minded, two-faced, or simply being a hypocrite for not behaving the way his faith principles and precepts required and demand him to live and to behave. The Apostle Paul also publicly confronted and challenged the Apostle Peter instead of behind closed doors because when other Jews saw what Peter was doing, they followed his hypocritical and foolish footsteps and did the same. I'm bringing this to your attention because one of your core values, one of your principles, premier and preeminent goals of this School Board is eliminating educational disparities or education gaps that we all know exists between the haves and the have-nots. However, as this Board presented this budget along with the severely misleading and misapplication of the data to rationalize and justify why you're not requesting funds for Project Grad, the Magnus Schools at Green, and Seramore Green Schools, I am compelled to share with you like the Apostle Paul that you are deviating from your goals, you are going counter to your core values, you are not adhering to your principles you said that you would operate by. In essence, this budget is antithetical to eliminating educational disparities. This budget is in conflict with eliminating educational disparities. This budget is simply hypocritical to what you said you were going to strive for in an area of eliminating educational disparities between blacks and whites in the Knox County school system. I wholeheartedly agree with those who say we should not pit one group of people against another, one school against another. However, this is exactly what this budget proposal has done. This budget has loudly and clearly drew the line between who counts and who doesn't count. This budget is divisive in nature, and it tells a group of people that Knox County School Board, their elected officials, don't care about their needs. Let me be clear and keep it real with you, this budget has the spots and the stains of racism and discrimination written all over it. Therefore, like the Apostle Paul publicly confronting and challenging the Apostle Peter, I've come to publicly confront and challenge you to live up to your core values, live up to your principles, live up to your stated goal of eliminating educational disparities between blacks and whites, the haves and the have-nots. Live up to what you said you were going to do by funding Project Grad, funding the Magnus School programs at Green and Seramore Green, and go the extra mile and give our precious teachers a pay raise. I'm available to speak with you regarding the open letter that I sent to each of you that I hope you received in your email. Thank you, and I'm praying that you are led with integrity. God bless your souls.
James Slay. Oh, sorry, David, I think this is David coming. Sorry, I couldn't see you over there.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. I have an 11th grader at Fulton who is part of the Project Grad program, and I have a third grader at Spring Hill. And so, as a parent and as a community member, I want to just share a few things with you. I sent all of you an email, I hope, hopefully you've gotten it, and hopefully you will get a chance to read and digest it. One of the things that was important about that email was I sent you a link to an article that I was pleased to be one of the co-authors on some years ago, which was an article published in the Journal of Negro Education entitled "The Influence of Parent Practices Upon the Reading Achievement of Good and Poor Readers." The reason I thought that this was an important article to send to you because this particular article was based off of a research project and study that began by asking one question: What makes a good reader a good reader? And from there, we developed the research instruments and were able to sample parenting, parents as well as students and developed the, that came forth and made that article happen, so much so that it was published by this outstanding journal. Yes, it's an old article, but the things that were in the article are still true because one of the points made in the very first paragraph or two was that the socioeconomic status of minorities, including blacks, was not expected to change much in the coming future. And we see that that has happened. A lot of things have changed, but a lot of things have stayed the same regarding socioeconomic status. And with that not changing, we see the fact that a lot of things have not changed with the practices that happened that make reading good for some and not good for others. And so I wish that you would look at that article, look at the different tests that were used, which I dare say I doubt were used, excuse me, that were used in determining that these programs need to be eliminated. They used the Spaschek Diagnóstic Reading Scales, the Howard University Phonics Test, and the Marston McColl Spelling Scales to analyze these reading achievements of these different readers to see what was going on that made them good readers. One of the biggest things that it found out in this particular study was you cannot deny the impact of parental practices. Parental practices, they're very important. And so one of the things I think needs to be done with these reading programs that we already have in place is not scrapping them because you don't believe there's enough percentage of achievement, but working with them to find out why that 11% who did score good scored good, and maybe making some input into the parenting practices to bring in the parents and find out what more could be done. Why? Well, I've been at Spring Hill four years with my daughter now, kindergarten through third grade. We don't have PTA there. What is PTA? I didn't even know it still exists until I heard the woman say it Monday night. We need to work on pulling parents in. There was one meeting where my daughter was in kindergarten where they asked all the parents to come, but since then, there's been nothing. Nothing. Now, they have programs where the parents are invited and things like that, but nothing that pulls in the program, all the parents. And so we're dealing with a lot of things that, that are infused in not supporting the students. We need to see this cup as not only half-empty, but see it as half-full. Work with what's working and bring these parents in. We'll have problems because we have a lot of parents that do not speak the language. And I'm not just talking about those that speak Spanish. I'm talking about the fact that we have parents here who, when you say something is hot, they think it looks good because that's their language. They say when it's cold that that means it's exceptional. They say that when it's fat, P-H-A-T, that that girl is cute. Cheese means money. You know, so we're looking at a different language construct. If you want to know more, look at the dictionary of black jargon, you can pull it up on the internet. But you need to keep these programs in place, work hard to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak on behalf of my children and the other students of Knox County Schools. I'm coming before you today to address the issue of the budget, specifically cutting of the funds for gifted and talented education. I have three students in the Knox County Schools. I've spent countless hours in the classroom volunteering my time, and as a parent, I've been very pleased with the differentiation of instruction that my children and other students have received. All three of my children have benefited from the gifted and talented programs, specifically their experiences with their GT coach, Ms. Jessica Everett. In Mr. Thomas's letter to the Board regarding the budget, he states, "In a continuous effort to be fiscally responsible, we have worked diligently to evaluate programs within Knox County Schools to ensure our resources are being allocated toward those programs that have proven effective." He goes on to say, "We are implementing a new approach to gifted and talented services that will train teachers to provide these supports, thereby allowing us to reallocate several coaching positions." I find this statement interesting and somewhat confusing as the following information was pulled directly from the Knox County Schools website. Quote, "We know that students enter classrooms with a variety of backgrounds and learning needs. The greatest challenge for any teacher is to try to meet all of those needs. Even among our advanced learners, there are differences in prior knowledge, interests, strengths, and challenges. If you think about it, there would be nearly no way to meet the needs of our many advanced students through one person. There is simply too much diversity of ability and need. Even if these students were all grouped in one classroom, there would still be innumerable challenges to meeting their needs. A good classroom teacher comes armed with many strategies and ideas to use with students of all learning levels. However, time is the limiting factor to finding ways to truly meet their needs. There simply isn't enough time to plan, prepare the activities, and collect the materials for meeting the differences." And I'm still quoting here. "This is where the potential of the GT coach is most evident. With 15 people across the county working toward this exact goal, the GT coaches form a wealth of knowledge that they share freely with each other. These ideas are then disseminated through to grade-level teachers, activities already prepared with all the legwork done, ready to be used. The lessons are packed with rigorous work, deep thinking, relevant subject matter, and plenty of choices for the students, all things that make excellent enrichment and extension for advanced students." End quote. So when you go to the Knox County Schools website, the, Shelly addressed this point too, the first thing that you see on the very top of the page is Knox County Schools, "Excellence for Every Child," with the word "every" in bold lettering. This tagline appears on every single link on the Knox County Schools website. I encourage each of you to think about this for a moment. Excellence for every child. It does not say Knox County Schools, mediocrity for every child. Gifted learners represent a diverse segment of our student population, and they deserve to receive an excellent differentiated education. It is simply not possible for the general education teacher to be solely responsible for providing opportunities for relevant differentiated instruction to meet their diverse needs. Giftedness falls under the umbrella of special education. Knox County has no trouble providing funding for behavioral aids for students with behavioral needs, has no problem funding speech pathologists for our students with special speech and language needs. We have occupational therapists, physical therapists, social workers, counselors. Knox County Schools provides hearing services, vision services, psychological services. Why are gifted services and the services, why are they the services that are deemed unimportant and worth cutting? I ask you again, are you willing to advocate for the excellence of every single child? I'd like to restate for all of you the mission statement of the Knox County Board of Education. The Knox County Board of Education's mission is to advocate excellence for all children by serving Knox County as the governing body for public education. All children. And someone else referenced Dr. James Gallagher, and I had an article that I was going to quote, but I'm running out of time. But he did note that American society was ambivalent toward gifted students because of its belief in the principle of equity for all. He viewed educational opportunities for gifted and talented students as a national security issue, but lamented that the only, only the national crises such as the Cold War or the Race to Space compelled the nation to consider developing this needed intellectual resource. He goes on to say, "For many years, adjustments within the regular classroom has been an accepted answer to the education of the gifted child in the elementary grades. It seems apparent that sizable retooling in the teacher-training institutions and more auxiliary personnel need to be provided before anything approaching the theoretical ideal can be obtained."
Your time is up.
I thank you for your time, and I feel like we need more of these auxiliary positions to provide excellence for our students. Thank you.
Thank you to Chairman Bound and the Board for this opportunity. My name is Phyllis Nichols, Knox County. I also serve as the President and CEO of the Knoxville Area Urban League, and I have been in that position since 1999. I reference that because I have worked with three superintendents and numerous classes of Knox County School Board. I want to thank you for your consideration of postponing this decision regarding our budget to allow for a more informed and transparent decision. Over the last couple of weeks, the community that I represent has been increasingly frustrated because of misinformation and lack of transparency. Because in Knox County, many of us who are in the audience today were around when we started magnet schools. Magnet schools were created in Knox County to establish a more diverse student body in our inner-city schools as a response to an OCR complaint. It was also started to provide special instruction and programs that were not available elsewhere, but it was also created to support a quality of life improvement in high-poverty schools. And so we ask the question, and I hope that we have time to get information to the community on a few things. When did our purpose and focus for magnet schools change? When was that decision made and was it shared with those who would be most affected? Why weren't parents notified? Why was there not a community process for parental feedback? How much money is actually allocated to Seramore Green and Green Magnet for our, for our magnet programs? And how much difference would the elimination of those two magnet programs make to the overall budget and programming in Knox County Schools? What initiatives are already in place and funded to improve the literacy outcomes for our children? And how will these limited dollars change this long-time deficit in our children's achievement? Money is not the answer to everything, but this time, it might be. And so we ask that you share this information with as much transparency and information that you can so that we can all become informed advocates for education of all students. And finally, we want to add that we support the parents of Gibbs. We support the parents of Hardin Valley. We know what it took for them to organize, inform, meet with you, and advocate for the needs of their community. We are not here in opposition to any parent's advocacy for what their child needs. We are here to advocate what our children need, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bounds, Board members, and Superintendent Thomas, and thank you for postponing this evening's vote. We're eager to continue working with Superintendent Thomas and the Knox County Schools Administration and the School Board to assure a continued partnership between Knox County Schools and Project Grad to continue the services that support students. I'm Stephanie Welch. I live in Knox County. I forgot that part. I also am the acting president of Great Schools Partnership, and I am the Board Chair for Project Grad Knoxville. I'm here once again tonight to talk with you about the importance of your investment in Project Grad and the impact of this investment on your partnerships in the community. First, I just want to note that First, I just want to note that I think that this community has already communicated the importance of your investment to students, families, and community leaders. I know that there's a lot of data that you're considering as you weigh your options tonight, not tonight, when you, when you meet later in April, but I urge you to add this community perspective as an important and meaningful source of the data that you choose when you're making your decision. On Monday, I presented some information about how the school district's investment in Project Grad helps leverage private sector investment. Grad was set up from day one as a public-private partnership. So I just want to review a little bit of the data that I shared on, on Monday. Just most recently, in fiscal year 2017, Knox County Schools invested approximately a million dollars, and that leveraged 1.4 million dollars from the private sector in direct contributions and in-kind donations, such as services to meet students' social service needs, summer institutes, and scholarships for our students. Since 2001, Project Grad, the private sector has contributed over 30 million dollars to Knox County School students in direct and in-kind resources. That's two-thirds of the cost of the Project Grad services that are offered to the students in this school district. So my concern is that if Knox County Schools does not invest the public portion of the agreed-upon, and the understanding of a public-private partnership, the private sector will also not continue to invest. So in other words, I'm going to put a little bit finer point on it, that your million-dollar cut could ultimately, my fear, result in additional 1.5 million dollars per year loss from the private sector. So that's not just a million dollars, that's 2.5 million dollars of investment that's supporting our students and the kids in your schools. That's not my only concern. Great Schools Partnership is your fundraising partner. The same donor community that's invested for seventeen years in Project Grad also invests in other programs and strategies that we value, that the community values, and that I hope that you value. Things like Parents as Teachers, Leaders for Readers, Teacherpreneur, after-school tutoring, and, yes, community schools. Just on the topic of community schools, I'd like to clarify something. There may be some incorrect perceptions about the relationship between Project Grad and community schools. This is not a one or other. This is a very seamless partnership between Project Grad and Great Schools Partnership. Project, the community school serves as a hub for services that are essential to students to be successful in school and in their lives, and Project Grad provides an essential service to that K-8 population as exposure to college and career opportunities for this community is very important to start early, to start often, and to start before high school. That happens in partnership with our community schools, not to the exclusion of one or the other. So in conclusion, I fear that your cut to Project Grad has the potential to make it challenging for Great Schools Partnership to raise the funds for the programs that are important to the district and the students in the district. So I will just ask you again to please let me help you, help me help you. We're continued to continue raising funds for the things that are important to the district and to all students in the district, and we hope that you will consider adding Project Grad back to the budget prior to your vote later this month. Thank you so much for your time today, and thank you for your service to our community.
Chantel Matique.
My name is Chantel Matique, and I'm a Knox County resident. I just want to take a second to just look at your faces and see the eyes of the men and women that we have trusted to make decisions on behalf of, of our children. And as has been stated yesterday and many times before, who we trust and who we have entrusted our future with. So thank you for, for your decision to represent us. I am from Nashville, Tennessee, and I had the pleasure of going to Martin Luther King Magnet School there, which at the time was the number-one school in Tennessee and continues to do really well. So I went to a school where my best friend was Muslim, and my other friend was from UAE, and my other friend was from Korea, and my other friend was African, and I can tell you that that is an experience that many students do not have if they do not go to a magnet school. The opportunity to rub shoulders, to engage cultures, to engage experiences, to understand the biases and the perceptions of people outside of ourselves is so critical to creating a better place for the future for our children and for our world. The, the impact that going to a magnet school had on me from eighth grade to 12th grade continues, continues to affect the way that I see the world today. I can remember coming to Knoxville, to UT, with other Black students from Nashville, and us being really surprised and disheartened at the lack of diversity at UT, having countless experiences where our professors didn't understand us, and feeling like our other academic representatives did not understand us, being followed in stores and looked at and being policed on campus. Those are the realities of many students who still go to UT that look like me. And so that's why, even for me, a young woman who went to MLK, who had to take all honors classes, who had to take at least three APs, whose parents both graduated with masters, my parents still were not able to equip me for an experience at a University of Tennessee for a second, for a post-education experience. And so I just want to reiterate the, the value of a program like Project Grad where these students have someone that they can go to and share real life with. It's not just about financial support. When you're in that classroom and you're the only one, and you feel like no one understands you, and you have no one to go to, the odds of continuing school don't look, don't look so great for you. And so I just want to, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and for your service. God bless you all. Thank you.
Richards.
My name is Addison Richards, and I've had the amazing opportunity to be in the Gifted and Talented Program in my third, fourth, and fifth-grade years at Fairgate Intermediate School. I've thoroughly enjoyed the service at each and every meeting. My mother is a GT coach at her school, and she does such an amazing job that I can't imagine this highly useful organization being cut. Next year, I will be at the middle school right next door, however, I have friends that won't. They are younger and enjoy the service that GT is currently providing. I shudder to think that such a wonderful department could be cut to the point that younger students would not, would not have this opportunity for higher learning. Advanced students are often bored in class with the topics they consider easy. The GT department provides what many students need, engaging and challenging learning. The goal of this amazing program, according to their webpage on knoxschools.org, is to create and maintain stimulating classroom environments with academic rigor for our advanced and gifted learners. They work collaboratively with administrators and classroom teachers to create and share resources designed specifically for our advanced learners. Another fantastic quality that should be mentioned on their webpage, but it is not, is the positive relationships they form with their students. I'm not just saying that because my mother is a GT coach. I have personally met a few different GT coaches and can confidently say that they are all kind and caring, as well as smart and considerate. They are able to provide attention to each student more so than a teacher in a large classroom could. This program provides many benefits, as I hope you can tell from my essay. So as I have mentioned throughout my time speaking, please keep the Gifted and Talented Program running strong. Thank you for your time, and hopefully you have consideration for my cause. I also have my folder that I take to class with me. If one of you could come and grab it for all of you to look at, thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Morris.
I appreciate you all stepping back and taking the time to reflect on all of the speakers that you've heard on Monday and this evening, and, and really thinking hard about the, the upcoming budget. Before I get started on my magnet speech, I want to express my support of the GT program. I am a former, former GT coach, and my son is a product of that program as well, and, and it has value and it needs to stay, and even more funding go to it if possible. What I'm going to share tonight, I sent all of you in an email, and I'm not going to read the whole email tonight, but there are just a few other things about the magnet programming that, that I hope you'll consider when you're making decisions about the budget. In recent days, I have been spending hours preparing a presentation to co-present a session at the upcoming National Schools Magnet Schools of America Conference. I find it rather ironic that the very program that a national organization recognizes as a quality magnet program worthy of five years of sessions presented by its magnet facilitator at their annual conference is in imminent danger of being stripped from our school. You may be unaware that Knox County Schools has had the honor of having some of its magnet facilitators, teachers, and administrators chosen as representatives of Knox County Schools to present for many years at this prestigious conference with attendees from around the country. Just last year, I had the privilege of co-presenting with my fellow elementary magnet school facilitators, Sarah Johnson and Krista Rhines. We did two sessions last year. Clearly, we are giving quality presentations that attendees are able to learn from us about our stellar magnet programs. We wouldn't continue to be asked back year after year if that were not the case. On the topic of recognition outside of our district, while we have not been, yet been named a STEM School of Designation, no schools have as yet, as this is the first year for the designation, and the announcement has not been made. For the past several years, Green Magnet Academy's STEAM program has earned state recognition. The Tennessee STEM Innovation Network has chosen to bring their Innovative Leaders Institute cohorts to GMA for the past several years. The TSIN and the ILI State Leaders choose Green Magnet Academy as a model and a place for learning for their participants. And one of the outcomes of the Innovative Leaders Institute is to be provided opportunities to visit and learn about how to open their own STEM schools. So we are being used as a model across the state. We've also had visitors come to see us from Michigan to, to see our magnet program because they were starting a magnet program at their school. So it's very ironic and incredibly sad to me that Green Magnet Academy's innovative STEAM magnet program is recognized both at the state and the national level, but not within our own district. A lot has been said about the reading scores at Green Magnet Academy, and I agree 100%. Those need to go higher. Achievement needs to, to, to reach higher levels. But I pose this question to you. What would the scores look like without the STEAM program? I would venture to say they would decline. There's more than one way to look at data, and growth tells a very important story, and the growth that we have seen there is good. The STEAM program excites our children about learning. It's the hook that grabs them and fosters the curiosity and desire to learn. It would be difficult for one reading specialist to achieve that same effect. That would be one reading specialist to take away six, the six positions that would be taken if the program is eliminated. It's going to take time. Many of the children who walk through our door come to us with years of deficits in addition to their daily struggles with poverty. I want to say loud and clear, in no way does the magnet program take away from literacy in our building. It enhances it. Every staff member and every volunteer at GMA works incredibly hard to help our students learn to read. Our literacy coach recently remarked that our first-grade students are scoring higher than any other cohort in her five years that she's been there. This comes after we, as a magnet program, decided to integrate our science and our reading standards, and I don't think that's a coincidence that we're seeing better growth. I want to end, I have so much more, but it's all in your email, but I want to end with the fact that the STEAM magnet program is who we are. It's our identity, and we're proud of this identity, and it's a positive part of this community, and we are in danger of being stripped of this identity by individuals who I don't think are fully educated about the magnet programs in our county. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Coats.
Tanya Coats, Knox County, KCA president. I had a totally different speech prepared for today because of the 87 that spoke on Monday, but one, I want to first thank you, Madam Chair, for affording us the opportunity to speak today, and Board, I know that this is trying times. I'm really grateful that you've decided to rescind the budget, but it's disappointing to know that, the pastor earlier spoke on one of the things, a legend that I was going to talk about, one of these old English legends from the Bible about Robin Peter to pay Paul. When we have one indebtedness to fund another indebtedness, we just can't survive that way of continuing to do that. And just as an aside, and for everyone that's here and everyone's at home, I want to let you in on a couple of things that you may not know, because we have some challenges, and I say "we" because I consider us all to be partners in something that is challenging us. But here are some of the questions that some of you may not know. Who in their right mind opens two schools in one year? Not Bob Thomas. We had that conversation. You just wouldn't do something like that. Who would fist bump, shake hands, or sign a memorandum of agreement and not ask for more money when we never had enough money in the first place? Not Bob Thomas. He sat in those positions before then. Who mandates students to be assessed and be measured, and be measured against things that don't, we don't get the resources when it's mandated? Not Bob Thomas. But lastly, who in their right mind actually increases insurance for employees but doesn't increase the cost of living? And I'm hoping not this Board. See, this time, this is a time that I'm grateful that you have decided to recognize that there's a problem, regroup, and reassess. You see, if you start pointing fingers, many of us forget we start, we have four fingers pointing back at us. See, this is a different, what I'm about to say now, most people think that this, I was going to have a different opinion than what I would say, but this man was way before his time. Back in 1995, this man, Michael Jackson, had this song that was called "They Don't Really Care About Us." Care About Us." See, we've heard since the rezoning of how challenging it is that teachers or educators across Knox County just won't get a raise this year because of the schools. And that's unfortunate, because as prior speaker said, that we need those schools and those communities, because those communities are needing to be uplifted, just as those that are being affected today. So, as we are fighting across the United States, and most of the time, people think that it's educators that have started these strikes, but it's the community that started these strikes, because enough is enough, and we have to band together and start taking all collectively, us all together, and start marching to the Capitol. See, the governor just did enough just to help us, but enough is just not enough. So, we're asking you to join us in solidarity, as you did today, about regrouping and reassessing and thinking about that. And then, I think about my kids that graduated from Knox County Schools. I am so grateful to you, because I was a single mother out there, right? My kids, both of them, went through the magnet program as being the GT program, and both of my kids did two different pathways. One went to STEM and one went to Fulton. But without the support of these folks that work in these schools, I, my kids, could not be on the dean's list, and my kids could not be in two different colleges at this time, and I support them in school. So, I thank you, and I know it's rough, but I'm asking you to continue to help be with these partnerships with Great Schools Partnership, Project Grad, and continue to stand with teachers and educators as we want to do what's right for all kids across Knox County. Thank you.
Demetrius Jaggers. I think Demetrius may be not here. I don't see him. Okay, Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Okay. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn as chair, I want...
I'm sorry, Ms. Owen.
Go ahead and finish.
No.
I was going to make a motion that since we did not have board forum on Monday, that we could have it tonight.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll start over here with Ms. Coats. Do you have anything?
I just want to say that I'm proud of the students who came up and spoke tonight. I know it's really tough, and just thank y'all for being involved in your education. I think that's really important, and I think that this has been a really interesting process to watch, so thank you all for being strong leaders through it.
Okay, Ms. Daffridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank everybody for indulging me on Monday through Skype, even though it didn't work as well, and it's great to be here so I can see faces, which I did not get to see on Monday. And the one thing I would like to do, because I was out in Texas serving as a Tennessee State delegate for the state of Tennessee at the National School Board Association, which was very inviting and very invigorating. But getting back to public forum, I want to thank, congratulate, I guess, the makeover, classroom makeover at Westview. We had $25,000 from ORAU for them, and I just wanted to congratulate them. I think the, so we did that on Monday, but I wanted to do it myself. And then, I want to take a little bit of time for my board forum. If I could indulge the board to, since Ms. Ronnie Chandler did not get to speak earlier, if she could take a portion of my board forum to come up and say whatever she needed to say, and I know we need the board to say, agree to that before she could do that.
And I will also cede my time for Ms. Chandler.
Okay. That's fine. But without seeing any objections from the board, Ms. Chandler, the...
I was going to say, should we just finish our board forum?
Let us finish our board forum. Thank you, as you're coming down, Ms. Chandler. Okay, Ms. Owen, you ceded your time. Mr. Norman, Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Uggott.
I was just going to say, I appreciate everybody coming tonight and talking about this. I also appreciate the tone that this discussion has taken from people, that it's not, let's not pit one against the other, and let's not blame folks. People, I've been on the board eight years, I'm just going to say it, people make the best decisions they can make at the time, and a lot of the things that have been decided, I didn't, that got us in this situation, I didn't necessarily support, but people make the best decisions they can at the time, and to continue to throw people under the bus for decisions that get people in this, in this situation, because if truth be told, there are members of the board sitting right here that voted for the two schools, so let's not be throwing stones at people. Let's figure out how we raise more money for education and quit cutting programs.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the engagement and all of the people who have spoken at public forum and the emails and the telephone calls. It's been hard to keep up with all those, so if I haven't gotten back to you, please forgive me. I may not be able to even get to all of them in the next couple of days, but I appreciate the engagement and the excitement and the discussion, and I think that we do need to have conversation and work together, and so, thank you.
Ms. Hill.
I support what Ms. Horn just said too, especially about all the engagement and your emails and trying diligently to answer them has been no small task, but it has been good to hear from you all. I think that this dialogue has been good at many levels with our county commissioners, with our state representatives, and with our community in general, seeing that the time has come that something has got to change.
Mr. McMillan. Okay. Before Ms. Chandler speaks, I'll just finish up board forum with what I was going to say. I want to thank everyone who came tonight, and I especially want to thank those who respectfully remained and listened to the needs of those other than their own. And you are to be commended for sitting through this entire meeting and listening to other people's opinions, and so, I just wanted to thank you for that as well. Now, Ms. Chandler, would you come and share with us what you wanted to tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You know, I do appreciate this opportunity, and I know that you're just trying to do your due diligence. I do understand that. In the last 29 hours, I've been asked for and provided specific detail down to specific name of every scholarship recipient represented in the $2.6 million in scholarships from funds outside of KCS dollars, and we send that detail by semester, by name, and by high school. I've been asked for and provided information on grad salary and benefit costs for grad. I've provided my organization chart and every job description. I've been asked for and provided the Grad 990 nonprofit report. I sense there may be a perception that we are overpaid and that all nonprofits should be barely paid, and I'd like to speak to that. When Grad was established, the founders and the board decided that if we're going to attract and retain highly skilled people with proven experience working with diverse children and families from challenging circumstances, then salaries and benefits need to be competitive, and we need to pay attention to creating an environment where people feel supported and want to be. When the founding executive director, Jerry Hodges, hired me, he told me something he would tell every hire: This will be the best place you've ever worked. We still work intentionally, so that continues to be true. This work is hard, on the hearts and the minds of the people on the front lines. Our kids and our families deal with so many challenges, so we also are intentional about taking care of the people who take care of the people. This work should not come at the expense of the staff's own family and their health, so we are insistent about self-care and serious about being family-friendly. Their day does not end with the bell. It is very similar to needing to provide a 216 Teacher Day contract for attracting teachers to priority and cusp schools. And I don't know if executive principals in the urban schools get any kind of incentive, but I know they sure deserve it. Anyone who's ever worked with a grad staff person on any level of our organization, school-based, front office, or back office, knows we only hire stars. In fact, some of our leadership staff who have left grad for positions within the school system are principals, and a couple work for central office. 62% of Project Grad employees have been with us five years or more. 38% have been with us 10 years or more. Several grad employees graduated from Fulton or Austin East, including me. I will conclude by saying, we have been providing information for the last 11 months related to grad support in our partnership together. We have been transparent and professional, because we have nothing to hide. We are people of integrity, we are respectful, and we are not rude. Our financials are independently audited annually, and to the credit of Ms. Jenkins and her team, we have always had clean audits with no findings. We are good stewards of every dollar entrusted to us from every direction. Several members of the Grad nonprofit board are here tonight, and they can vouch for us as well. I really don't know what else we can provide, unless somebody wants to know my shoe size or my favorite food. I do want to say publicly to the Project Grad staff and board and all educators in urban public schools, thank you for your continued support of kids and families in their home neighborhoods. They deserve the best. Every penny you earn, you deserve it. And one more thing, I had not planned to share this, but just so I can know that I left everything on the field in this stand for children, let me just say this. What about the children? Remember when we were children? And if not for those who loved us? And who cared enough to show us? Where would we be today? What about the children?
That's interesting. Okay, thank you all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Does that move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman Seconded, by Mike McMillan. Meeting is adjourned.